2021 Board of Selectments meeting to order at 6:30. Mr. Pinio, do we have a need for a non-public session?
Madam Chairperson, we do, under RSA 913 Roman numeral 2, A, employment, C, reputation, and D, consideration of sale/lease of real property.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is the consideration of minutes of September 15th. I've handed those out. For some reason, they didn't get in our packet. Is the board comfortable with this going on with these minutes? Making any corrections? Everybody okay?
There was just a few typographic errors or grammar errors, but I'm fine with them.
Okay, I have a couple of changes. And I'm going to start on page two. It is the last sentence in the third paragraph under the Libby trustees. "I would not support the MOU with," should be instead of "unless." Then going on page three, it says, "Friends of the Libby member," that should, first one should be Tom Goodwin, and the second one should be John Wilkins. The first motion, I was opposed. And then the last motion on the page, and I'm going to go to the second sentence. I believe what we said was, "The first payment in 2023 will be a Warren article for the town's percentage of what the Friends of the Libby Museum had raised. Before that, a business plan and economic viability study will be conducted. And then when we did the roll call vote, I voted no." Those were the changes that I had. Anybody else have any other changes? Oh, last page. Questions from the press? It's Elissa, E-L-I-S-S-A.
Linda?
I have a couple.
Okay, Brad?
Also on page three.
Yep.
The first motion, about the middle of the page.
Yep.
During for the roll call vote. I wasn't included, my name and vote is not included in that. I had voted yes on that.
Okay, good catch.
Same thing, the...
The next one.
Second one up from, second motion up from the bottom. It's, I would be in there again, voting yes. And the same thing on the top of page four.
I guess she didn't think you were there.
Apparently.
Okay. I also think you're missing from the second motion from the top. It says, it was seconded by Brad Harriman in the roll call vote. You're not in the roll call vote there either.
Yep, yep, that one too.
Does anybody else have any changes or corrections? Hearing none, can I have a motion to accept as amended?
Still moved.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those pass. The September 22nd minutes were not in the packet. I would like to have a motion to table them until the next meeting.
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Tabled those. Moving on to public hearings, the first public, I'll open up the first public hearing. It's for the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen to consider a temporary event permit for the Wolfboro Park and Recreation to co-host with the Lions Club, the Annual Turkey Trot 5K on November 20th, 2021, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Railroad Avenue and Depot. Is anybody here to speak to that? Is there anybody in the public who'd like to speak to it? This is the annual event put on by the Parks and Rec and the Lions Club. And it used to raise money for heating. I think it now, a gift of sight and hearing fund is what it's for. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members, do you feel comfortable voting this in without anybody here? Or would you like to table it?
I feel comfortable voting it in. It's an annual event that they run in conjunction with each other, so I'm good with it, bringing it up for a motion anyway.
Okay. Are you going to make a motion?
I'll move to issue a temporary event permit for Parks and Rec, co-host the Wolfboro Lions Club, the Annual Turkey Trot 5K on November 20th, 2021, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., Railroad Avenue and Depot Street.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next public hearing is the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen to consider a temporary event permit for the Wolfboro Chamber of Commerce to host a community event called Christmas in Wolfboro from November 27th through December 25th, 2021, in downtown Wolfboro. Is there anybody who'd like to speak to that?
Please, Mary DeVries. I'm the executive director of the Wolfboro Area Chamber of Commerce, and we are so very much looking forward to bringing back the Christmas in Wolfboro Parade that we did not schedule last year. And Christmas in Wolfboro is a month-long community event. It kicks off with the lighting of the community Christmas tree, and that takes place after actually the, hopefully, Christmas in Wolfboro Parade. So everyone will gather at the community Christmas tree, and Santa will use his magic to light the tree. And then Santa Claus will stroll up to Santa's hut, which is located, will be put in place on Main Street adjacent to Town Park. And will hopefully open the hut for visiting hours on that Saturday, November 27th. The parade starts at 3:00, so everything would follow it. And we're, after the opening of Santa's hut, we continue to have visiting hours with Santa. And that's, they're all free of charge for anyone in the Wolfboro area community, families, what have you, to come in and visit and drop off your wishes to Santa. And then we have the second Saturday in December, the Christmas Spirit Open House. We did do things a little differently last year. We combined what was norm, in previous years, the breakfast with Santa and Christmas Spirit Open House into one Saturday, where it was all about families and friends shopping, and the participating businesses collected donations to Life Ministries Food Pantry, and also on that same day for the Wolfboro Children's Christmas Fund. And I, it was tremendous support shown by the community. We were able to deliver some new toys to the police department for its children's Christmas fund, and we collected some non-perishable donations that were delivered to Life Ministries Food Pantry, and also more than $15,000 in cash donation for Life Ministries. So looking forward to bringing that event back. We continue with the visiting hours of Santa. I don't think I'm leaving anything out. I do want to add, please, that the community Christmas tree would not happen if it wasn't for the Wolfboro Municipal Electric Department. And they make sure the tree gets put in place. If you haven't seen it before, come out and try to catch them while they're stringing all the lights. It's quite a sight to see, and as well as when they take it down. But we're looking forward to the tree going up. We do not have a tree for this year chosen yet. If anyone has a tree that they would like to be considered, we look forward to looking at that. And also, and I'm going to be careful with my wording here, in case there happens to be any young children listening, or how should I put this? Santa really needs help, hint, hint. So if you're interested in Santa, please come and see me. We need some help there. And I think that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak to this event? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members? Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, can somebody make a motion?
Move to issue a temporary event permit for the Wolfboro Chamber of Commerce to host the community event called Christmas in Wolfboro from November 27th, 2021, to December, excuse me, November 27th, 2021, to December 25th, 2021, in downtown Wolfboro.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, you have your permit. I'll open up the next public hearing. It's the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen to consider a temporary event permit for the New Hampshire Lakes Region Pickleball Club to host the eighth annual pickleball tournament at Foss Field Lainer Street Courts for September 8th, 2022, through September 11th, 2022, from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. daily. Do I have somebody who'd like to speak to this?
Thank you. My name is Joe Santoro. I'm here again to represent the pickleball club for our eighth annual event. This year it keeps, seems to grow larger. This year we had 300 players and almost 200 additional visitors. We had more than 500 people come to town, and their money in local businesses, hotels, and restaurants. And overall, it seems to be a very good time. We had a number of town employees participate, and hopefully next year, Jim, you'll get more of them to be a part of our event. We hope that you'll give us an opportunity to do it one more time.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this temporary event permit? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members, do you have any questions or concerns? I do note that you are asking for the basketball courts right away this year in order to accommodate 300. Am I correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, can I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to issue a temporary event permit to the New Hampshire Lakes Region Pickleball Club to host the eighth annual pickleball tournament at Foss Field Lainer Street Courts from September 8th, 2022, to September 11th, 2022, from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. daily.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You have your permit.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'd like to open up the next public hearing. It's the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen to consider a temporary event permit for the Wolfboro Historical Society to host a Halloween trick-or-treat event at Clark Museum Complex on October 31st, 2021, from 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Do I have anybody who'd like to speak? Just state your name for the record.
Louise Horsken, I'm president of the Wolfboro Historical Society, and this is Libby Shannon. She is my coordinator. Half of the trick-or-treating done last year. Libby and her husband, private citizen, funded the whole. Parents were asking to come through, almost like Disney. And at the end of the display, initially, we have a map of what we have. It was a candy shoot. Kids thought, the parents and kids thought that was the greatest thing. But we'd like to, the Wolfboro Historical Society wants to sponsor that it was on our grounds and it was such a great success. So Libby has some maps to hand out. We'll have tablos, which will include a spider cave, pumpkin patch, an owl bird lake, a witch code.
Very much.
A pirate with treasure chest, a fortune teller, a bartender. And famous, the garden club asked to join us. They would like to light, put lights in gardens. And as of right now, I have 10 volunteers. You have the insurance. And last year, as they were, it was COVID, and so we had them, I stood at the gate. That was six feet apart. The kids were very respectful of it. They're used to it. And the parents. It was a delight. They all had fun. And that's what we'd like to do this year. But the time.
Our application says from, I believe it says from 3?
Yes.
To?
8.
8, and we'd only like to have kids from 5 to 7.
5 to 7, okay.
We need like an hour on either side to clean it up and set it.
Okay, so we'll do it 4 to 8, because that'll give you your time to clean up. So we'll do 4 to 8.
That's about all the candy we could hand.
Yeah, probably.
Yes. There were about 300.
Oh, neat.
And I also just wanted to point out that way this worked last year was that we had everybody enter from East Clark.
Okay.
So that we could control like the flow of kids and that it wasn't like, they weren't just running around in the park or anything. And on the map, kind of scribbled on it, but you can see that the kids will only be allowed in a certain part of the museum complex. So they're going to enter near the firehouse and just kind of form a U shape, and they're going to exit right in front of the barn, which has the candy. So we're not asking for them to be, you know, allowed in the whole entire complex, just a certain area of it. That makes it any easier?
Kind of a pass-through.
It is a pass-through. Yeah, it's not, it's just for trick-or-treating.
And of course, I was policing eight, and I'd let kids in, you know. And funny, there was one little one, and we had a big spider web. Spider, so we walked around the tree, you know. But they had so much fun.
Good. Well, thank you. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Bob Tuffer, and I live on Clock Road. And I'm accompanied by my neighbor and friend, John Burt, who lives on East Clark Road across from the park. John and I are plaintiffs in a recent legal action, and we came to an agreement with the town on Clark Park, which resulted in the relocation of the farmer's market. I have a letter I'd like to read, if you don't mind.
Yep, go ahead.
So, the Clark Park Agreement between the Wolfboro Select Board, John Burt, myself, was executed on September 8th, 2021. In that agreement, all parties acknowledged that Clark Park was established by way of a gift of land and buildings to the selectmen of the town of Wolfboro, New Hampshire, and their legal successors in office as trustees by deed of Greenleaf B. Clark dated December 25th, 1917, recorded in the Carroll County Registry of Deeds, Book 154, Page 317, is known as the Clark Deed. The Clark Deed provides, in part, except as here and after expressly provided or otherwise, the granted premises are to be used solely as a public park of ornamental and quiet character for restful purposes, and not to be used for baseball games nor for any other athletic sports. The year 2020 brought a worldwide COVID-19 pandemic to New Hampshire, and as a result, the economy stalled with businesses, municipal buildings, and schools being shuttered. There was no vaccine available at the time, though the best approach developed was social distancing and wearing masks to prevent the spread of the virus. As a result of these pre-vaccine precautions, it meant the postponement of many traditional activities, such as Halloween trick-or-treating by children. A Wolfboro family, Jim and Elizabeth Shannon, came up with the idea of creating a socially-distanced and carefully-planned Halloween event at Clark Park, whereby children could walk by volunteers and trick-or-treat for candy. This was a very thoughtful and generous gesture by the Shannons, and the event reportedly went very well. The year 2021 brings a great deal of normalcy to our society. A large percentage of the New Hampshire population is now vaccinated. Businesses and schools are open, and people are going about their business largely in similar fashion as they did prior to the pandemic. We also expect the tradition of Halloween trick-or-treating will return to normal. The homes in the vicinity of Clark Park normally see 500 to 700 trick-or-treaters on Halloween, and this is a typical non-town-sponsored activity which we support. The area is no doubt the busiest in town. John Burt and I feel that an advertised Halloween event in Clark Park this year will bring in even more trick-or-treaters to the area than we normally see on any given year. And this could lead to unsafe conditions, especially when it gets dark. We also thought the time was 3 to 8, and we were very concerned about that. We felt that in that scenario, the 700 number would have been much larger. This, this is a great idea that smacks of Foss Field, in our opinion, lights, restrooms, and plenty of parking. We also feel that such a Halloween event in Clark Park does not conform with Greenleaf Clark's deed restriction, that the park be used solely as a public park of ornamental and quiet character for restful purposes, and therefore a violation of our Clark Park Agreement of September 8th, 2021. Accordingly, we ask, or we respectfully ask, that the Select Board rejects the temporary event permit request from the Wolfboro Historical Society to hold a Halloween event in Clark Park on October 31st, 2021, or any alternate date. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak?
Yes, ma'am. I'm John Burt, and a resident of Wolfboro on East Clark Road. I have been retired for over 30 years. And in those 30 years, I've enjoyed seeing the Halloween activities that have occurred there. Normally, 500 to 700 children come down the streets, through the houses on the area. And has been, this has been very successful, very safe, without having any activity on the park itself. I am remiss that I do have a memento, a sneaker about this long, that I found six months after the Halloween stuff. I meant to bring it. But I've enjoyed having them, and they've always been very good, but they hadn't had to have activities on the park. So I don't understand what this interest is. And again, as Bob Tuffer said, it's to be used as a park and a place of beauty and quietness. And you agree to that. Now, if you read the, I'm not a public speaker, excuse me. You read the deed, it says, "Except as hereafter expressly provided otherwise, the granted premises are to be used solely as a public park or ornamental and quiet character for restful purposes." That's your job to make sure that happens. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak? Are you not?
By the way, I have absolutely no unhappiness with having the kids coming around, but not on the park.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak? You can give us more input if you'd like, yes?
The activities we're having is on Clark Museum Complex. It is not on Clark Park property.
Clark Park includes from South Main Street to what is supposed to be South Clark Street, known commonly as Goodrich Road. That is a park. It encompasses everything.
Okay, is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to give us any public input? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Is there any comments from the members of the Board of Selectmen?
I have one.
Okay.
Go ahead, you go first, Luke.
Okay. My thought is this, and this is where I'm thinking. You know, we dealt with the issue of the farmer's market and obviously finding, you know, going forward, they will not be using Clark Park as stated. It's October 6th, we're 25 days away from Halloween. This whole thing with the park has just recently come to our attention this year. I feel that I would approve this permit for this year. And maybe, maybe in the future, they can find a different location. But we're 25 days away. They've obviously done a lot of planning already. They put it on last year. They know, they would design, concept, you know. I'm likely to vote to approve it based on that if, you know, and I'd be even willing to say, you know, going forward, we could revisit it next year. But I think with the time crunch and the fact that we just came to that agreement with Clark Park recently, that I'd be likely to approve it for this year.
Brian?
The only thing that I have to say is that kids aren't vaccinated. Kids are not vaccinated. Adults are vaccinated, children are not vaccinated. So this does give an outlet for parents that may be concerned having a more structured event for the children than going house to house in general neighborhoods. So there is something to say about that. Because adults are, but kids aren't vaccinated, and kids right now with the Delta variant are getting sick.
Any other members say anything?
Make a motion.
Oh, I'd like, could I make the motion, please?
Either you or Dave, either one of you can make a motion. I don't care, you can.
I'll move to issue a temporary event permit for the Wolfboro Historical Society opposed to Halloween trick-or-treat event at Clark Museum Complex on October 31st, 2021, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You have your permit. Okay. The next item on the agenda is public input. Do I have anybody who'd like to give any public input? Hearing none. I'll move on to the bulk vote. We have only A, which is the Weekly Manifest. It's September 17th. It's $195,836.05. September 24th, 2021, it's $1,068,759.04. And October 1st is $114,181.49. That takes care of the bulk vote. We do not have any appointments tonight. The first item on the agenda is Rod Klossinger Power Line Request. Do I have anybody who'd like to speak? Rod, Barry, somebody want to speak to this?
Madam Chair, before we go on that, do we need a motion on the bulk vote? Being just the manifest?
Your vote on the, just the reading of the manifest?
I don't believe we do. Okay.
Okay. Yeah.
Claude Rossiger, Wolfboro, New Hampshire. My impression on June 16th was that I had asked two questions and that I was coming here to hear your answers.
Okay.
It wasn't a discussion anymore. The discussion was held June 16th. But I'd be happy to answer questions.
Okay. Barry, you want to come up and explain your memo to us so the public understands what we're talking about?
Barry Mucio, Director of Operations, Selective Department. So it was my understanding there were.
A management plan and economic viability plan. Do we want to put money in the 2022 budget? Do we want to use the Throth Trust for paying for it? How do we want to, as a board, if we say we need to go down that line, pay for it? Brian, you did some work on that. You found, thought of the.
Well, I think the, I think the business plan could be done, I mean, the Friends of Libby have a lot of smart, capable people. I think that they could start creating their own business plan with a timeline and where they plan on going, so that we see something in writing, a document that says, this is where we are, this is where we plan on going. I don't think they need to hire anybody to do that. There's, I see a lot of very intelligent people over there that can start that process. If they needed a consultant to help them along the way, it wouldn't be an incredible amount of money. And if they needed help with that, yes, I think we could help them with the cost of that. For the economic study, I've talked to people, I think we could split the costs of that economic study, and I think we could use that additional account that we have that is used for the care of the Libby Museum. And I don't mind helping them with the expense of an economic viability study. But I think the business plan has, the preponderance of it has to be on their shoulders because the selectmen and the next selectmen that show up 10 years from now and 15 years from now shouldn't be running a museum.
I disagree with you about that.
Do we add something to the agreement then?
Well, I see this as our, you know, our kind of talking, and then if we're going to make a motion, we need to come out into a Board of Selectmen's meeting. If it's just a suggestion, we can talk about it beforehand, but any kind of change we have to do out in the Board of Selectmen's meeting. Is there any more discussion while we're inside the Friends of the Libby, Trustees of the Libby Museum meeting? Can I have a motion to come out? Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now, Dave.
Well, my understanding of what was just discussed in our other meeting was that Brian has volunteered to help them develop an economic and viability study, some of which will be paid for by the town and some by the Friends of Libby. And I would agree with that. Now, how do we structure that within the responsibilities and goals? Is that where we put it in? We change Annex One to read differently? I don't know how we do that, but I think that needs to be incorporated in this agreement, that we will, Brian suggested maybe split the cost with them. We have some funds. Do that. But I don't know where we put that. Because I don't think, I think we can agree upon it between us, but should it be as part of this partnership memorandum of understanding? That's my question. Because if we're going to do that, I think it needs to be part of this, if we're going to sign it, needs to be on this page somewhere.
Board members?
See, if you take Annex One, it says also agreed to develop a strategic business plan economic viability study. And then at that point, maybe we need to put something in there that says we will help with the costs of such. I'm not sure how to word it, because there's a couple of other things there. But somewhere we need to put in there that, you know, I'll agree with Brian, that we need to probably help them with the study. I don't think they should bear all the financial responsibilities because we do have some funding.
Could we say something as simple as prior to the 2023 warrant, the trustees of the Libby and the Friends of the Libby will conduct an economic viability study with a shared, with a shared expense by both, or something like that? Would that cover it?
Well, we also have, do we want to, I mean, we had in the other motion, the management plan.
Yeah.
I don't want to let that.
Okay, so both those.
Not be there, because I think, I'm not quite sure, but some of that management plan, Brian may be correct, needs to be there in order to do the economic plan, so.
I'm not saying we take that out, I'm just saying it needs to be put into that Annex One, it seems like.
I think it's Annex.
Is that what you were saying?
Annex Two, I think.
Yes, yeah, Annex Two. Well, yes, we need to outline.
We have it in this document here, we have it as Annex One. The motion that was put into place says Annex Two. No, mine says Annex One. Yeah.
The next page, though.
Yeah. Yeah, I know where it is. It doesn't say what I was just talking about.
Madam Chairperson?
Yep.
I just may want to note that we're working on an agreement here, kind of on the fly. It seems like there was some discussion about trying to create a subcommittee. I think we need to get back to that subcommittee, not negotiate this in public. That subcommittee worked with the Friends to finalize this agreement, come back on the 20th, get it signed. As far as the funding for those studies, you know, if it gets the town of Wolfboro out of the museum business and puts the operations of that onto somebody else in the future, those Throth funds are unrestricted. That seems like a really good use of those funds to fund that complete study if it ends up getting us out of the museum business. But I think we probably are going down a slippery slope of trying to negotiate this in public.
Well, I agree with you. I just want to, because I hear it from them, we need to get going on, because the time is ticking every time we wait longer. So let's decide, is it going to be Brad and Brian who's going to meet with the Friends of the Libby Museum and hammer this out and get something here for us for the 20th? Sorry, we have to go one more time on this. But I think we're going to struggle here tonight.
Yeah, okay, I agree with that. Brad and Brian, can you guys take? I don't think we need a motion for that.
I just need a consensus that they're willing to do it.
Yes.
Okay, and that we're willing and we'll move on, and thank you. All righty, we're moving on. I had, I started to work on the master plan goals, and the first edition, we had 154. And I started down, and after a while, I got glazed over. So what I asked Amy to do was to take out all the goals that we were number one responsible, and that brought it down to, I think, around 55. And so what I did is I just went through and checked them and where you think whether we're going to do it now, one to three, three to five, or five to 10 years. Put your name on it. Check down where you would like them to go. Hand them into Amy. Amy will totally look, and then we can look at it. I just don't want to spend the time to go through 15 some odd.
I had a whole bunch of questions.
Yeah. So she cut, and this is cut and paste from the master plan, so.
Okay.
If we weren't listed number one, I didn't have it put on. And if somebody feels very strongly about something that I don't see us spending a whole lot of time. But make sure you write your name on it so we know. Okay. Is there any other old business, new business, any business?
One thing to bring up, we kind of got in this conversation last night at the Planning Board meeting regarding recording secretaries.
Oh, yes. Got a problem.
Yeah.
The what?
Recording secretaries. We don't have one on the Planning Board anymore. I don't think the ZBA has one.
We don't.
And we're in budget season, so now would be the time to have a discussion or during the budget season here to. One thought that did come up, it was mentioned, I have no idea what any cost would be, I don't know if Jim would or not, but if there's agencies out there, because I guess we've, you know, we've been advertising like attempts or something like that, do something for full-time, one person, full-time, that covers everything, you know, I don't know. Different things to look at. You probably had some conversations with some department heads on this already, so.
We did reach out to somebody today as well. I don't know where that's at. Amy is working with somebody to see if we can hear somebody based on Kathy Barnard coming in this morning.
I mean, all the subcommittees, I'm taking minutes, I'm getting circulated through.
Doing the same thing with the.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, we need to find some solution to this.
We did try software, but the software is to a single voice recognition. It does not work with multiple. You know, that, it was, we tried it, it didn't work.
Well, I suppose we should get figures for, we should get, take all the part-time secretaries, and if you put it in one job, what is that? What the, what impact would that have if we made it a full-time? Or not full-time, probably 29 hours, then you wouldn't have, what?
I get an unusual idea. What about, do you have to have a legal age limit to be, take minutes? Do you have to be 18 years old? There's something that says that. I'm wondering if you could have high school students who work at the Vogues Center, they do all sorts of internships and things like that. I'm wondering if they would be, I mean, they're fast on the computers, and with a little bit of training, I'm wondering if you have, if they have to be 18 years old, if they could be used. You could start a whole program with the high school, and this ends up giving them community service. We could give them a stipend or a little bit of money for college or something to that effect. I don't know if it's legal or if it's possible.
I think it's, I think it's legal.
Well, I don't think you can have a 15-year-old taking minutes.
Well, I, Brian, I think that they do do work placements.
Yeah.
You know, and we can maybe have Amy take a look and see if there is something, and at least maybe cover some of our.
Maybe Brewster kids, too.
Committee meetings, I think is one thing. We may need something else for our bigger boards. But I think in terms of.
Yeah, there might be, there might be interest with Brewster students also to do that.
Yeah. Okay, we'll look into that. Any other comments? Thank you, Brad, for bringing that problem up.
Because I've been afraid to.
What?
I've been afraid to.
Ah, I mean, I've been hunting for it, and I thought, I thought we had, I met somebody in the supermarket, and she said, wow, I'm looking for a part-time job. I said, I got a job for you. I don't know whether she called or not, so we should probably keep on asking people. All right, next item on, is there any other, other business? Hearing none, we'll go on to committee reports, and I'll start down here with Brian.
Oh, we didn't have anything last week, which was an unusual week. The EV chargers are going in, that's a, that's a good thing. They actually have called me down to look at where they're going to be placed and to look at them. Luke was telling me that he went by today, and they have the trench all in place. So it was, that's working nicely. Other than that, there haven't been a lot of meetings since our last meeting. We had the whole week off last week, didn't we?
Okay, I had a CIP committee meeting and we worked on the narrative, and that should be coming to us in the next meeting. I had two special event committee meetings. We're going to be out raising money. We have to raise 2,500 for the fireworks and about another thousand to put on, I'll answer your question, another thousand to put on the event. We're still struggling because we don't know whether we're going to go all in person, in-person and virtual, or all virtual. So we're trying to make our way through that. Yes, Brian, what would you?
The extra money from the Fourth of July fireworks fund can't be used.
I'm not going to use it because I promised the Budget Committee I'd raise the money. And so I'm going to try to keep to my promise with them. I'm on the Trustees of the Libby Search Committee for the new director, and I'm pleased to say we have already gotten 19 applications. So that gives us a good number to look for. They're in the process. It closes on the 15th, and then shortly after that, they're going to do some preliminary video meetings or interviews, and then they're going to go down to some essay questions and follow-up with in-person interviews. So that's moving right along, and that's all I have. Dave?
One meeting was zoning board adjustment on Monday night. It was, quote, a non-meeting. It was discussed some policies, that kind of thing. All I have.
Last night, had a planning board meeting, fairly quiet night. We had a boundary line adjustment and a lot merger, and we were actually out of there a little after eight o'clock, so we got home in time to see most of the Red Sox game.
Oh, good. All righty. Town managers report. Jim?
Anytime the Red Sox can beat the Yankees, it's a good night, right, Brad?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so a couple of items. The Abenaki snowmaking project has run into a little bit of a snafu. Everything's on-site and in transit at this point. We had to change contractors. I have met with the new contractor, it's Integrity Earthworks here in town. We have worked with legal counsel to terminate the previous agreement, and the new agreement is in process of being finalized. Just an FYI about that, so there was a change in the contractor. Tomorrow night, budget starts. I will not be here for personal reasons. With that said, I was going to give a brief intro to the budget, which I will give you this evening. You have in front of you the slideshow that I'm going to quickly go through, and Casey will be here for the meeting tomorrow night. Can I get the slideshow up on the screen, please? Is that possible? Thank you. Okay, so a quick introduction to the budget. I'll go through it. There's some changes. You do have your budget books. They are complete. You have got all of the budgets in there, so it's actually gone quite well this year. So, a couple of changes, you'll see in the budget books, you'll have a notes page. That note page outlines changes in the 2022 proposed budget. The changes in the book format compared to last year include a new Muni Smart Report. That Muni Smart Report will show three years of history, and it will also show actual expenditures through September, the end of September of 2021. With that said, it has the department heads' request and the town managers' request. There's not a lot of changes there. The department heads really came in spot-on, so there wasn't a whole lot of changes that I observed in the budgets. You will see a new department labor and operating worksheets. Those worksheets will show the complete cost of an employee with all in, whether it's retirement, health insurance, it shows everything. Improved assignment of funds to various accounts, such as phone stipends now has its own account, and that's credited to the cost of an employee as well. Insurance, and we also merged the legal based on New Hampshire DRA recommendations. We used to have three or four different legal lines. That's all been merged into one. The other thing that has been happening traditionally, when you go through the budget books, you'll see gasoline and diesel. There's a gross cost of the fuel in the public works garage because they're the ones who buy that product, but you'll also see it booked in the individual departments, the fuel they use. We were able to work with myself, Casey, and Dave, get that figured out. We would book offsetting revenues, so there's not a change in the tax rate because of it, but what it does is it certainly doesn't show the expenses for fuel being double-booked. So it's done once. Cover pages show gross appropriation by the fund, and I'll quickly go through that. Capital outlay this year. This is one of the big places that we've got some significant change. The general fund capital outlay request this year is $230,409. Those are broken out individually, and when you look at the summary sheets, that's not included in the bottom line. Last year, I believe, we were about $99,000 on capital outlays. And you'll see operating budget totals. You'll see percentage changes. Report, that's from 2021 to 2022. It will show labor benefits, operating expense, town managers' proposed total, total by fund, gross amount without, again, without capital outlays. And then you'll see a tab in there that identifies the accounts, gives the name of the accounts, and tells you which tab within the book that that budget is located. Here's a quick look at the new Muni Smart Report. If you remember, the previous Muni Smart Report, under each line, you had some verbiage, which made the Muni Smart Report quite lengthy and sometimes hard to follow. This puts all of the line items into pretty much a single page, and it goes back to 2018, actuals, and then department requests, town manager requests, and again, the 2021 actuals through September. When we go to the Budget Committee, we will update that to reflect the end of October. A question, Linda?
Yeah, well, eventually, you're the town manager's budget, and then the Board of Selectment, and then the place.
Yep.
Are you, or it can be expanded all the way up?
It will be. Yep.
Thank you.
This is one of the new sheets that Casey has put together. You know, town manager's budget is mostly all labor, but as you can see, it lays out the expenses, and this is where the individual departments explain their changes in their budgets, and it brings down, again, the 2021 versus the 2022 proposed, and the changes associated with it, both in dollars and in percent. This is one of the sheets that I think people are going to actually thoroughly enjoy. This actually shows the labor, employee detail. It gives the individual's name, gives the rate of pay, hours per week, and wages. Then it's broken out as well to show the different costs for cell phone stipends, FICA, Medicare, retirement, health insurance, dental insurance, liability, unemployment, workers' comp. So you have an idea of what the true cost of a total employee is, and then it's broken out in the bottom as a total, but it is less the insurance, because we've got that in that standalone line. So, to summarize the proposed 2022 budget, if you recall, my goal was to come in with a general fund budget of an increase of 5%. Wasn't able to do that. So the proposed budget at this point is $15,722,713, or an increase of 6.282%. However, when you factor in all of the enterprise funds, the overall increase at this point in the budget is 4.184%. And again, this does not include the capital outlay. Casey recommended we do that completely separately, and that's, we're doing. So to summarize some of the known increases in the budget, the labor and benefits line, there's a 7.4% increase in that. What's in there? Fire Department is proposing increasing the staffing by one. You will also recall last year, we brought on a full-time technology services position, which has worked out wonderfully. He's on board, and that's a, that's a year-long position now. And the juvenile services officer that was approved last year, that's in there. This is the last year of the police contract. That contract recognizes a 4% increase in wages. There's also significant increases in the New Hampshire retirement system. We got hit with that in July, so we will see a full year of those increases. For group one employees, it's, went from 13.75% to 14.06% of your salary is responsibility of the town. For police, it went from 30.67% to 33.88%, again, based on gross wages. And fire is, went from 29.78% to 33.99%. Health insurance, at this point, we don't have the final numbers. Health insurance, we're looking at a 10% placeholder at this time. We usually get those numbers end of, end of November, early December. The operating expenses, we were able to come in on budget, 4.5% increase, and that's on the general fund. Where some of those increases are, agencies, if you remember last year, we had a couple agencies that withdrew their requests. Those are back in, so we see an increase there and a couple of new agencies. Fuel heating, there's, there's an increase there. We saw a substantial increase in all of that based on the request proposal we put out, so that's budgeted. Solid waste tipping fees, I think that's up about $100,000, so that's a fairly substantial increase. And then an increase in the debt service based on what was approved last year by the voters. The other thing that is, we were able to get finalized today, and this ties right back to that full-time IT person. I think a lot of people are going to like this. We got the budget done. The budget is 350 pages, plus or minus, but we were able to get it on to the town website. So I'm going to end this slideshow, and I'm going to start another one really quickly. Ooh, no, I don't want to do that. My eyes are going a little bit cross, so it's going to take me to get this transitioned So on the homepage of the town's website, there is an icon, 2022 Town Manager's Proposed Budget. Casey was able to work with David Baker, our IT person. We spelled the word download wrong, but we'll get that corrected. So you open that up, it brings you to another icon. Click here for downloads of PDF of the proposed budget binder. Click that, and it will open. Once that opens, the budget is here. You come over here to the top, and you've got the table of contents. It is searchable by departments, so if you wanted to know the MED, you click on that, and it takes you to the MED link. The other thing that's really interesting about this is it's searchable. So if there's something you're looking for, you click on this magnifying glass, and you type in what you're looking for, let's just put in town manager, and you hit enter, and over on the side, it will show you all of these little red dashes. You scroll down through all those little red dashes, and any place in the 350-page document that it has town manager, it will come up highlighted green, and you can scroll down through it. So it really.
Job well done.
Yeah, it's really excellent. This got, this got finalized today, so this is really a pretty cool tool for the citizens to use. It is on the town website, and really Casey, in conjunction with David Baker, the IT person, made this happen. So, you know, for the Budget Committee members, they want to start doing their work now, it's there for you. Have at it. And there's 347 pages of fun for you to go through.
And that's transparency for the people in town.
Yeah, so this is, we were trying to get this accomplished last year, it just, it couldn't happen, but having that IT person in place this year really brought it together, and there it is. With that said, I've got nothing else for you.
Thank you. Job well done. I am sure many people in the community will be glad that that's there and be able to get to it, so, thank you. Questions from the press? I don't think we were even online tonight.
We are. Alyssa is here.
Okay. Alyssa?
Yes, I am. I don't have any questions. This has been quite, quite a full meeting. Lots of information, lots of things to digest. Thank you.
Thank you. Public input? Anybody? Oh, got two. Come on, Mary.
A question about the docks upgrade, and specifically the stamped concrete. I didn't catch what color that is.
My understanding was going to match what is at the dock side patio would be mine.
That is what Jane envisioned. It's going to blend in with what's there, so it would be that gray color.
Okay, what's on the other side in the front?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. And then I was just going to comment that I was on WolfboroNH.us for completely unrelated, using it as a resource for something completely unrelated to the budget, but I noticed it immediately. So you said it went up today. I guess I didn't know I was seeing it when it just got published, but in general. So I'm a frequent visitor to WolfboroNH.us, but I have noticed in the recent times in general, that news page, I, it's very helpful and it seems very up-to-date, and so just a comment that it's, I think that is a resource.
Mr. Baker is certainly doing his job. Mr. Baker is certainly doing his job, he's got his hands full, but he's definitely become an asset.
Thank you.
Suzanne Ryan, I can barely contain myself. I don't have to ask for a book at the library. I'm not too terrific with the computer, but I think I'll be able to follow that, and it's much appreciated. I probably won't have to bother looking at the book downstairs and the outer, out of your office, so that's great, very nice job, thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Okay, with that, I need a motion to go into non-public.
So I'm over.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Hey, Brad?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
I'm yes.
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
All right.